All right, good evening, everyone. We have reconvened from closed session and we have nothing to report out. So we will adjourn the special meeting at 6:00 PM and switch over to our regular city council meeting. I'd like to call the call to order of the Elk Grove City Council Regular Meeting. Today is Wednesday, March 22nd, 2023. It is 6:01 PM. Clerk.
Pardon me, sorry. I didn't pull up one of my notes, but thank you, Mayor. This meeting in the Elk Grove City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed caption and webcasted at metro14live.saccounty.gov. Tonight's meeting replay is on Friday, March 24th at 1:00 PM and Sunday, March 26th at 9:00 AM on Channel 14. Previous meetings can be viewed online at www.elkgrovecity.org or youtube.com/metrocable14. For members of the participating audience who may have personal electronic devices, please place them on silent mode during the meeting or on mute when you are not speaking. Elk Grove City Council welcomes, appreciates, and encourages participation in the city council meeting. City council requests that you limit your presentation to three minutes per person so that all present will have time to participate. City council reserves the right to reasonably limit the total time for public comment on any particular noticed agenda item as it may deem necessary. Pursuant to Resolution Number 2010-24, no individual speaker concerning public comment may address the city council for more than three minutes. If you wish to address the council during the meeting, please complete a speaker card. There are the blue cards, which can be found at the back of the chamber, and provide them to Assistant City Clerk Brenda Haggard prior to consideration of the agenda item. And with that, we will move to Section 1, our call to order, and starting with the roll call with Councilmember Rubles.
President.
Councilmember Brewer.
Here.
Councilmember Seun.
Here.
Vice Mayor Spees.
Present.
And Mayor Singh Allen.
Here.
All members are present.
All right, thank you. Next up is our Pledge of Allegiance, and I would like to invite up our Troop 189, which is an all-female diverse Boy Scouts troop, to help lead us in the pledge this evening. So if you would like to come up to the podium and help lead us in the pledge. Right here to the podium. Thank you. Next up, we'll observe a brief moment of silence, please. Thank you. Next item is the approval of the agenda. May I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next item is closed session, clerk.
And there are no closed session items on the regular agenda, which will advance us to Section 4, our Presentations and Announcements, starting with Item 4.1, which is Proclamations Declaring March as Women's History Month.
All right. Do we have Samantha Tove and Sarah Costa here? Would you please come up to the podium? Good evening. All right, Women's History Month for March 2023. Whereas the celebration of women's history traces its roots to March 18, 1857, when women from various New York factories staged a protest over poor working conditions, that initial effort was expanded in 1987 when March was designated as Women's History Month. And whereas the purpose of Women's History Month is to increase consciousness and knowledge of women's history, to take one month of the year to remember all the women, with a promise it will be impossible to teach or learn history without remembering their contributions. And whereas women have played critical roles in our history and continue to serve as leaders, not only securing women's rights of suffrage and equal opportunity, but evolving our collective well-being, creating a more fair and just society for all. And whereas Samantha Tove, whereas Samantha Tove, co-founder of Portfolio Real Estate, has created a brand to serve the community with selfless, straightforward, open-hearted professionalism, she has built a reputation for being an honest, tenacious agent that consistently gets her buyers the best deals and her sellers the highest returns. And whereas for the past 19 years, Samantha has been one of the go-to real estate professionals in Elk Grove, where she led number-one teams, won many high-level awards, and trained countless top-producing agents. And whereas Samantha is the current president-elect of the Sacramento Association of Realtors, past president of the Asian Real Estate Association of America, Greater Sacramento, and is the incoming Board of Director for the National Area Foundation. And next for Sarah Costa, whereas Sarah Costa works on the external affairs team for Sutter Health, focusing their community and governmental affairs efforts across their valley area, she works closely with local and state leadership and partnering with other local healthcare systems to create impactful, lasting change in our community. And whereas current Chair of the Board of Directors for the Elk Grove Chamber of Commerce and Co-Chair of the Chamber's Elk Grove Economic Equity Task Force, Sarah engages in finding partnership and programmatic opportunities for local businesses. And whereas, as a proud Elk Grove raised resident, community member, and first-generation Portuguese-American, Sarah is an active participant in the local Portuguese community. Sarah has held multiple leadership positions with the Luso-American Fraternal Association and has been a next-gen member of PALCUS, the Portuguese-American Leadership Council of the United States. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Elk Grove hereby proclaims March 2023 as Women's History Month in the City of Elk Grove, and we appreciate Samantha Tove and Sarah Costa for their commitment to the community and all of the great women in our city. Signed, this 22nd day of March 2023. Would you like to say something? We'll go with Samantha first.
Thank you, Mayor Bobby Singh. It's an honor and privilege to be here today. Thank you for this. My why in doing what I do is always to be a great role model to my kids and to lead by example and encouraging other people to step up with their serving hearts as well. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mayor and City Council, for this proclamation, let alone even just being considered for it. The fact that it's for Women's History Month is a true, true honor. There are so many incredible leaders in our city and in our region, and I just hope to continue to find ways to give back to my community. Thank you all.
Thank you, and congratulations. So stay right there, we're going to come down and present this to you. Or here?
You be in the middle.
Okay, there we go.
One, two, three. One more. One, two, three. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations. All right, next up is a recognition of Janath Ahmed for bridging from PAC 385 to Troop 189. If Janath, and you want to bring your troop leaders and come up to the podium. All right, Janath Ahmed, PAC 385 and Troop 189 crossover and investiture ceremony. On behalf of Elk Grove City Council, congratulations on your recent achievement to bridge from PAC 385 to Troop 189. You have had numerous opportunities to work together with PAC 385 along the trail, and now you are continuing with Troop 189, where you are going to make many new discoveries and experience a wide variety of new adventures. Your pride and enthusiasm are evident when considering the dedication and diligence required to meet the many challenges essential in achieving this honor. We wish you great success in your future endeavors and encourage you to continue setting and achieving immeasurable goals through greater adventures, personal performance, and community service. On March 10th, 2023, PAC 385, first girl in the history of their PAC, bridged over to Troop 189. Troop 189 is an all-female diverse Boy Scouts troop. Both groups are based here in Elk Grove. Janath Ahmed broke the barrier as the first South Asian Muslim and hijab-wearing Boy Scouts of America scout to do this in the entire council. It is International Women's Month. This year's theme is equity. She showed that if you put hard work and believe in yourself, things can happen. Recognition on this eve of Ramadan and hope that this serves as a motivation to continue helping daughters breaking barriers everywhere. Congratulations, Janath. Would you like to say something?
No.
I will say something. We moved to the city 10 years ago. Janath was actually born in Sacramento, and my family and I fell in love with the diversity, the people. It's really the people of Elk Grove that makes us special, and I had mentioned this to Mayor Bobby Singh, that, Allen, that if she does not see leaders, then she will not lead. So I appreciate the leadership that we have in this community.
Thank you. I had the privilege of witnessing the ceremony, and I'm just so proud of you. I am so proud of you. You are leading the way, and as a South Asian myself, I know the many obstacles and challenges that are often before us with our culture and even our faith, but know that you're breaking those barriers for girls in your, all around you. And so these are important milestones, so remember, the responsibility that comes with being a first means you can't be the last. Yes.
I just want to say Assalamu alaikum, and congratulations, Janath.
We'll come down and give this to you. Keep up the great work.
Thank you.
Next up is public comment. I will go ahead and open up the public comment opportunity, and let's see. We have several people signed up to speak. We'll start with Joseph Cannard, followed by Samuel Richardson.
First, I would like to express my gratitude to the mayor and the city council for standing up for Elk Grove and their city rights. My name is Joseph Cannard. I've been a resident for Elk Grove for over 12 years. I'm here today to express my opposition to the recent letter, and this is referring to the Oak Rose Project. I'm here today to express my opposition to the recent letter from the Attorney General's Office, which I believe is a bullying move from the state. This letter undermines the decisions made by our local officials and goes against the wishes of the majority of the community. The Oak Rose Project was denied because it did not meet the city's objective zoning standards. However, the Attorney General's letter argues that the use restriction cited by the city does not qualify as an objective standard under state law. This contradiction is causing confusion and uncertainty for the community. I also want to address the fact that the City of Elk Grove has presented an alternative solution to Oak Rose, but the applicants have not considered or attempted to work with the city on any type of alternative. The city has gone out of its way to offer a solution that meets their objective zoning standards and the needs of the community, but Oak Rose have failed to acknowledge this. We need to ask ourselves, why is Oak Rose unwilling to consider this alternative solution? Are they truly looking out for the best interest of our community? Furthermore, I personally do not live in Old Town Elk Grove, but I know that this location is not ideal for a city and community. If Oak Rose was acting as a good neighbor, they would consider an alternative solution and work with the city in good faith. In light of these issues, I urge our elected officials to uphold the original decision to deny the Oak Rose Project. We need to ensure that our community is protected from developers who refuse to work with us and acting bad faith. Instead, let's support projects that work with our community and align with our local zoning standards. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next up is Samuel Richardson, followed by Allen Vito.
All right, hello, everybody. Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, council members, for standing up for Elk Grove Local Controls. I will also be discussing the Oak Rose Project in the letter that our mayor was recently received. When I saw that Attorney General Rob Bonta had sent a letter to our mayor regarding the Oak Rose Project, I immediately thought that this was an attempt by the state to strong-arm our city. As a homeowner, business owner, and lifetime resident of Old Town Elk Grove, I'm repulsed with the state of California and state politicians for dictating their demands to our humble city. Elk Grove City staff and the community reached out to the applicants with several different locations and solutions, but the applicants have made no attempt to work with the city or with the community. Why are they so set on developing this project in Old Town, a location that's not only protected by the OTSBA, but also largely unfavored by the majority of the community throughout most Elk Grove, not just Old Town? If the developers at Oak Rose cared about our community, even the smallest amount, they would be, and even the smallest amount, they would be good neighbors and work with our city staff to find a solution and a location that's better suited to their needs, the unhoused individuals' needs, and the needs of our community. Elk Grove is not opposing new housing projects similar to Oak Rose. In fact, they have approved two other below median income housing projects that will provide hundreds of units. This is a decisive step in the right direction, and we hope that the team over at Oak Rose starts to move in the right direction as well. SB 35 allows for objective standards to be enforced on any project. The city is in the right here, and we as a community will be behind you guys 100%. Please fight back against this unjust attempt by the state to bully us into submission. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next up is Allen Vito, and that is our last public comment speaker unless somebody else wants to fill out a card.
My three minutes starts right now?
As you start, sir.
I kind of got the same stuff. So Madam Mayor, City Council, and city staff, I want to personally thank you for standing up for Elk Grove. I got this stuff written because I was leaving town. I've been here all day. I don't even want to tell you what I've been doing, but it wasn't fun. These threats from Attorney General Rob Bonta are unsettling, nearly as unsettling as his wife overseeing the committee in charge of funding in his own office. Corrupt state officials have no place in Elk Grove. Our city needs power to create their own objective standards and make the ultimate decisions on whether those standards can be changed. Not all projects are made the same, and the Oak Rose Project is, in particular, has no place in Old Town. The Attorney General compelled apples to oranges when he, when his reference to Elk Grove Courtyards Project. The Courtyard Project does not front Elk Grove Boulevard and isn't a permit supportive housing. There's also going to be housing, you know, from what I understand, people that are, you know, they're broken and they don't want to get fixed. Our mayor and city council have approved several new applications that will bring housing to hundreds of citizens below the median level, income level. Our city staff and community have reached out to Oakmont, which you've already heard, and they've ignored us entirely. I'm here to tell you that, you know what, there are some people that I've been, you know, I've been here for a long time in Elk Grove, and my little business I got, it brings me all kinds of people. And so there are some people that got a gang of money that are not happy with that Rob Bonta and all the stuff going on with him. And in fact, some of these old boys that have developed a lot of stuff running here, they're like going, hey, Vito, I'm ready to put my money where my mouth is. I want to sue everybody involved if they let something like this go in Elk Grove. And me, I'm just a little businessman, but you know, I've worked hard for everything I got, but I'm willing to put some money up. Because you know what? I think it's wrong, and I want to, I want to believe that each and every one of you aren't going to allow it. And this lawyer right here, everything I've ever seen this guy do, I'm impressed, and believe me, I've needed lawyers to help me a lot in my life. And this guy's impressive, and so I'll tell you what, I'm 100% behind you. You want to go against these guys? I think that's what we need to do as a small city, is we need to stand up and say, hey, listen, you guys are controlling the city, not controlling it, but you guys are inspiring it. You guys are bringing, you're doing a great job. I've been here forever. I've never felt so good about Elk Grove, about the police chief, about planning, about everything in this town than I feel today. And so to come in here and try to bring poison, I mean, I understand we got to help somebody. If I had more time, I got the plan. I know how to help homeless and people that are all messed up. You know why? I was homeless and all messed up. So I'm going to leave with that. I got to go home, man. I'm tired. I'm supposed to do stir fry. I want to thank everyone. I'm serious, I'm not making it up, man, it's serious. I stopped because I, they called me, I was on my way home. My son gave me this. It's pretty much to these two guys that just left. They both had to be at an 85-year-old's birthday right now. They stopped to come here to tell you how important it is.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Have a beautiful day.
Have a good evening. Thank you. That is our final speaker signed up, so I will go ahead. Is there another, is that another slip?
I think they're coming in for other items.
Okay, then I will go ahead and close public comment opportunity and move on to our next item, which is our city manager's report.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the City Council. This coming Sunday, March 26th, runners, joggers, and walkers will be taken to the streets of Elk Grove for the 12th Annual Kaiser Running of the Elk. The race starts and will finish, will be ready, will be set up at District 56. The race activities begin at 8:00 AM. Staff will be providing public safety and traffic management services. Details on road closures and detours for the event can be found on the city's website. Our very own Mayor Singh Allen will be delivering the city's annual State of the City address next Friday, March 31st, during the Chamber of Commerce luncheon at District 56. For those who are unable to attend, the speech will be broadcast live on the city's website beginning at 12:30 PM. Just a reminder, Measure E sales tax that the voters approved last November will go into effect on April 1st. And later in tonight, we have an appointment of two additional members to that oversight committee. Recycling Waste Team is hosting a tire collection event coming up on April 2nd through the 5th from 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM at our Special Waste Collection Center. Elk Grove residents have recycled more than 10,000 tires since this program started only three years ago. Recycled tires are used to create many other useful products. Some restrictions do apply. And finally, the Youth Commission will host Family Fun Day on Saturday, April 15th, from noon to 4:00 PM at the Old Town Plaza. This free event will feature carnival games, music, activities, and more. Food will also be available for purchase. That concludes my report. I'm happy to answer any questions the council might have.
All right, thank you for the excellent report. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, thank you, sir. Moving on to our next item, our consent calendar. I will go ahead and open up the public comment opportunity. I do not see anyone signed up for consent for public comment opportunities, so I'll go ahead and close that and look for a motion.
There is, there is one item that hopefully I can have a brief comment on that's relative to 7.9 and the authorization of 50, in excess of $50,000. I guess what I would be asking in that, Jason, is if maybe in the future we can look at raising that number appropriately, given inflation, and try to perhaps see if there's a number that works better, so we wouldn't have to kind of deal with the $14 odds and ends. So just something to think about for the future.
You're talking about increasing the purchasing authority at the staff?
Right.
Yeah, we're actually in the process of reviewing that right now. So perfect, perfect timing.
Perfect, thank you. And with that, I'd be willing to move, or did you already move consent?
No.
I'll move consent.
Second.
All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All right, next up is Item 8.1.
And that is a public hearing to consider an ordinance amending the City of Elk Grove's zoning map and Laguna Ridge specific plan and a resolution approving a minor design review and tree removal permit for the Mesa at Laguna Ridge Phase 2 project.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. My name is Kira Killingsworth, and I'm the project planner for the Mesa at Laguna Ridge Phase 2 project. The applicant is requesting a rezone, a specific plan amendment, a minor design review, and a tree removal permit for Phase 2 for an existing apartment complex. Phase 2 will accommodate 143 units on 10 acres, and the rezone will be from medium-density residential to high-density residential, and the tree removal permit will be to remove 10 trees of local importance. This project was heard at the March 2nd, 2023 Planning Commission meeting. There was one public comment at the meeting. The resident had some concerns regarding the intersection at Bilby Road and Bruceville Road. Those comments were sent over to Department of Public Works, and they are aware of it, and they're working on it. The commission voted to recommend approval to the city council. The project is located in the Laguna Ridge Pacific Plan on Bruceville Road, north of Bilby Road and New Alefa Avenue. It's surrounded by existing and new single-family dwelling subdivisions and to the south, a senior housing, existing senior housing facility. As mentioned earlier, this is a Phase 2 of an apartment complex. Phase 1 was approved in 2016 for 55 units and a community center. At the time of that approval in 2016, the density was different. It was RD 15, which is medium-density residential, and that allowed 15.1 dwelling units to 20 dwelling units. And again, Phase 1 complied with that density. After that, the city updated the Pacific Plan to comply with the zoning code, to be more consistent. So the medium density was changed to 12.1 to 15 dwelling units, and that is the reason for the rezone. The general plan designation is high-density residential, and the RD 20 complies with the The whole entire 10 acres, so Phase 1 and 2, would be a part of the rezone, and that would be from RD 15 to RD 20. And again, that is 15.1 dwelling units to 20 acres. Phase 2 is on the north side of the 10 acres, and the community center, which is already completed, is in the center of the property. There will be two driveways, one on existing off of Bruceville Road, and the other one is off a new Alefa Avenue. The project was heard by the city's Trails Committee. There's an existing bike lane on Bruceville Road and a new bike lane off of Alefa Avenue. The parking does comply with the zoning code, and the number of units proposed is 198 units together with Phase 1, and they will be market rate. together with Phase 1, and they will be market rate. The buildings will comply with the original Phase 1 project. There'll be a variety of two building, two-story buildings and three-story buildings. There'll be five buildings total. They'll range between 32 feet tall to 42 feet tall. Phase 1 is about, about the same, they're about 31 feet to 40 feet. The architecture is a contemporary Spanish style with neutral earth-ton colors. They will have balconies, windows, and gable roofs. And again, these will comply with the city's design guidelines. The applicant's requesting a tree removal permit to remove 10 local, trees of local importance, which are Valley Oak trees. These Valley Oak trees are in the blue of the, on the screen, and they are in the location of Bruceville Road as well as Alefa. And the reason for the removal is to widen both these streets to comply with the general plan. So they're all in the, for roadway improvements. The other trees that will be removed are in the, where the buildings will be located. The rest of the trees are not part of the local importance, and so they don't require a tree permit. As part of the landscape plan, there will be 36 new Valley Oak trees. Staff finds that this project requires no further CECL review per Section 15183, which is consistent with the general plan. And staff recommends that the city council approves, finds that the project is exempt from CECL, adopts the ordinance to approve the rezone and Pacific Plan Amendment, and adopt a resolution to approve the design review and tree removal permit. To date, staff has not received any public comment since the March 2nd Planning Commission meeting. That concludes my presentation, and I'm, staff is available for any questions as well as the applicant. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. I will declare that the public hearing is now open and invite the applicant, if you wish to speak.
Good evening. My name is Stephen Ballet with Jeffrey Demir and Associates. We're here representing the applicant. Tony with the Civil Engineering Team is here as well. I believe our arborist is here as well. We're here to answer any questions that you may have. First, I want to thank Kira for a wonderful job of presenting, presenting, sorry, to this evening. I think, I don't know if there's any additional questions. You did a wonderful job. I'm here to answer any questions that you may have, and with that, thank you so much.
All right. Thank you. At this time, I'll open up the public comment. Did you want to say something? I'm sorry.
No.
Oh, okay. I'll open up the public comment opportunity. I don't, anybody sign up, so I'll close the public comment opportunity. And if you don't have any further comments, I will go ahead and declare the public hearing is closed and turn to our council, looking for a motion unless you have questions or comments.
Mayor, just a quick comment. Thank you. I just want to, happy to see this project come forward. You know, again, I think it's on all our minds. You heard the public comment earlier. We're providing a range of housing, including people that are, that are starting out, so happy to make this motion to introduce and waive the full reading by substitution of title only. An ordinance finding no further environmental review is required pursuant to Section 15183 and approving a rezone and specific plan amendment for the Mesa at Laguna Ridge Phase 2 project PLNG 22-021. Assessor parcel numbers 132-0050-034 and 132-0050-026.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Any other comments? Yes, go ahead, sir.
No, I want to, I, I definitely want to reiterate Councilmember Soons' remarks on this project. This is one of these, part of a progression of, of things that we're doing here to provide mixed housing for, for people that want to come and live and make Elk Grove their home. And so I'm definitely, definitely very thankful for, for everyone here tonight and, and very glad that the report came out very smooth. Thank you, Kira.
All right. Seeing no other comments, we have a motion and a second. I, too, also look forward to the project. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right. Motion two.
Motion two to adopt the resolution.
Can I get a second?
Second again.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next item, 8.2, please.
And our 8.2 is a public hearing to consider the 2023-24 Community Development Block Grant and Community Service Grant Funding Recommendations.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. I am Alicia Tutt, your Housing and Grant Specialist. The item I have for you tonight is our annual discussion on how you would like to allocate the Community Development Block Grant and Community Service Grant Funds for the next fiscal year. This year's discussion also includes some additional funding recommendations using some Measure E funding. Background information, the Community Development Block Grant, also CDBG, is provided annually through the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. This funding is limited to certain eligible activities, which does include a small amount of funding for public services. Most activities must benefit low-income persons to be eligible. Priorities for the city's use of the CDBG funds have been set forth in our five-year consolidated plan, which was last renewed and adopted in June of 2020. We also have our Community Service Grant in support of nonprofits that serve the Elk Grove community. Historically, the council has set aside those funds out of a general fund. This is a more flexible funding source and can be used for a variety of costs, except for event sponsorship, which has their own grant program, and council will consider those recommendations next month. Over the past few years, we've had additional funding available through the CARES Act and American Rescue Plan Act funding to support our local nonprofit partners. No longer having these funds, funding streams have decreased the total amount available we have to support services provided by our local nonprofit partners. However, with the passage of Measure E, one of the needs and priorities identified by the Elk Grove community is to address homelessness. So given that, we anticipate having some Measure E funding next year. We took that into consideration when looking at our applications and evaluating and providing recommendations for those activities that address or prevent homelessness to help stretch the dollars a little bit further. For the next funding program year, our CDBG allocation will be $910,987. We are allowed to use up to 20% of that funding for administration and for housing activities, although historically, we allocate around 15% of that. Federal regulations allow us to use up to 15% of that CDBG allocation for public services, which historically, we have used to the full amount available for that purpose. In addition to the new funding allocation, we are including over 361,000 in prior year unspent CDBG funds in our recommendations tonight. This funding is limited and only eligible to be reallocated on capital projects. One additional limitation of CDBG funding is that it cannot be used to supplant recent local government funding, so we have to be careful that any activity that has previously received Community Service Grant Funds cannot be supplanted with CDBG funds. So we take that into consideration when making our recommendations. For CSG, we have $440,355, which reflects an increase of close to $19,000 from the previous year, which is in line with our projected general revenue growth. And then finally, as part of our recommendations, we have included $65,000 of Measure E funding for activities that address or prevent homelessness. The city released an application for our two funding sources, CDBG and CSG, in January. Funding availability was announced through the city's website, our weekly updates, social media postings, notices. We're also sent via email to our extensive nonprofit list that we have. Nonprofits could apply for CDBG or CSG funding using the same application for one activity, and there is no limit to the number of applications that one organization could submit. A technical assistance webinar was held in January as well for all those interested, and we posted an archived video of that recording on the website for anyone to watch if they were not able to attend that actual day. We also provided one-on-one technical assistance and support throughout the entire application process as needed. Applications were due February 14th. We received 29 applications from both nonprofits and city departments for a variety of activities. The total funding request exceeded $2.1 million, which is always a tough challenge, given that we don't have $2.1 million. So it's a tough challenge in looking at those, in those requests and making those tough calls. After determining if an applicant was eligible for funding, the applications were reviewed, reviewed based on impact to the Elk Grove community and high-needs populations or target populations identified in our consolidated plan. The feasibility of implementation, the reasonableness of their budget, if they had the administrative capacity to fulfill grant requirements, especially CDBG grant requirements, and then if they had any cash or in-kind matched funds that were leveraged for the projects. All applicants had the opportunity to clarify aspects of their proposals during the application and review process. In your review packet, or in your packets, you have a detailed list of funding requests received and a short description of each proposed activity. The next few slides represent those applications that are being recommended for funding. The first two are capital project applications, and these are both from city departments. One is the Minor Home Repair Program, which is operated out of the Housing and Public Services Division and offers forgivable loans to low-income homeowners needing assistance to make minor health and safety repairs to their homes. And then the other is our annual citywide curb ramp program, which works to reconstruct non-conforming ADA ramps throughout the city. Next are the CDBG public service recommendations. An asterisk next to the funding total denotes that some of the funding in that total either comes from CSG and/or Measure E funding as well. And there's in the spreadsheet that you have in your pocket, you can see that breakout. There were several grants that were able to split the funding, we were able to split the funding pots to make a higher grant recommendation for them. The majority of these are returning grantees that have been funded one or more years in the past. A few to point out, Black Youth Leadership Project is a new grantee under CDBG. However, they received funding under ARPA for a separate program. They are proposing to serve low-income youth and families struggling with trauma, isolation, and economic insecurities. The Tenant-Landlord Education and Fair Housing Services activity is a funding set aside for us to provide fair housing services, which is an obligation for CDBG funding. We provide this activity as part of a regional collaboration with the county, City of Sacramento, City of Citrus Heights, and City of Rancho Cordova. We are currently working with these partners to identify who will be providing these services. And then the three projects in here that we're recommending for some Measure E funding include Elk Grove Food Bank Services for their Support Works and Utility Assistance Program, Sacramento Self-Help Housing, Transitional Housing, and Waking the Village Emergency Housing for Transitional Aged Youth. Next, we have our Community Service Grant Recommendations. These cover two slides, so I'll talk a little and then flip it. Of the 15 nonprofits recommended for funding, the majority are returning. Only three are new funding, three are new organizations to this funding program. We received, or we are recommending funding for a variety of organizations, offering public service assistance to the homeless, low-income families, youth and senior programs, animal services, as well as support for theater and the art programs. The three that are new to our grant programs are Campus Life Connection Crossover Basketball, that is proposing to expand their basketball program to Elk Grove, adding some Elk Grove teams. Friends of the Elk Grove Animal Shelter, their Paws for a Purpose, looking at emergency funding for Elk Grove families in needing funding for their pets for emergency medical costs. And then the third is on this page, it's Sacramento Children's Museum is working with Elk Grove City, Elk Grove Unified School District's Title I Elementary Schools for, to do field trips. So those are the three, three new to our program. Next steps after this is, we will release the CDBG Draft Action Plan for Public Comment on April 10th, and it'll be open for 30 days, and it'll talk about all of the programs that we're funding under CDBG. The CDBG allocations will be formally adopted. We'll come back to council for a public hearing on May 10th and approve the action plan and approve those formal recommendations. CSG and Measure E allocations will be adopted as part of the budget process later in May or June, and then staff will work with each grantee to write a scope of work and budget to incorporate into our grant agreement, and funds would be available July 1st. That is my presentation, and I am happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay. We have a number of people signed up to speak, so I'll go ahead and declare the public hearing is open and open up the public comment opportunity. Before I go there, I do have one question. On the Measure E.
Yes.
The committee has not met yet. Why are, how are we getting ahead of their recommendations or how that's all going to come together?
Some of the recommendations, so the, the priorities and needs that have been identified do talk about addressing homelessness, and so what we did was we looked at those that are a part, it's a small amount in $65,000 that are addressing and preventing homelessness. So those are part of the recommendations coming forth. These are definitely things that can go forward to the committee as funding recommendations.
I mean, my recommendation, if we're going to ask for Measure E funding, at least procedurally, I would want the committee to have their meeting and then have it go through there and then come back, rather than already spend money before it's come to the oversight committee. Does that make sense?
Yes. Both the CSG and the Measure E aren't formally adopted until the budget process. So these recommendations are coming forth now, so we can start our CDBG action plan and our public comment period for that, since we have to have that submitted well before the funding year. And so those recommendations, when we come back in May, will be formalized, and then CSG and Measure E won't be formally adopted.
So you'll have the presentation there in the interim for the, for the monies, before it comes back for formal.
They should describe it right. So tonight, if you agree with the recommendations, before it comes back to you to actually adopt the budget, we'll take it to the Measure E Oversight Committee, make sure they're, they're okay with that, and then it'll come back to you for final adoption.
Okay. Got it. Yeah, I just didn't want to usurp sort of that process in that. So thank you for that explanation. All right. The public comment opportunity. Our first speaker is Judy Sala, followed by Yahiel Rogers, and I, forgive me if I said it wrong.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members and Elk Grove staff. I represent Uplift People of Elk Grove. Uplift is a nonprofit organization that serves to keep people out of poverty. People that are on the brink of poverty through several different circumstances, we, through education, through training, through advice, and through referrals, try and keep them from falling into homelessness. We serve recovered addicts and help them also find sources and resources to keep them on the level of being clean and sober. Our clients currently range in age from a few weeks old to more than 80. We meet weekly, we serve them a meal, we talk about how our week has gone, and then we break into groups where we teach them how to eat healthy on a budget, how to fill out a resume, how to apply for jobs, how to get your car fixed and smogged cheaply, and everything we can think of and everything that they ask to help them stay stable and lift up from that brink of poverty where they are right now. So I'm here again to thank you for considering us for a grant. This will be our fifth year, and we couldn't do what we do without, without people like yourselves and the wonderful people of Elk Grove. I, as you have heard me say many times, is Elk Grove proud and Elk Grove strong. So if you have any questions, then I did a great job. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. All right. Next up is Yahiel Rogers, followed by Royal Edwards. I'm sure you're going to correct my pronunciation.
So you actually said it right.
Oh.
Yeah.
Excellent.
Right, right. I just want to say thank you guys for the opportunity. I'm here on behalf of Crossover Basketball. First and foremost, I want to give a honor to my laureate, savory G. First and foremost, I want to give a honor to my Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, and crossover is a faith-based youth basketball program. I'm one of the coaches and former students as well. I'm twenty-two years old, and Omar Turner is the guy who, first and foremost, first and foremost, created crossover basketball, and it was created by a vision that was given to him about twenty-plus years ago, and Omar actually cannot be here, he's on a much-needed vacation, but the vision was basically that he's seen a lot of young men and a lot of young women in an atmosphere where the young men were sagging, they were smoking weed, they were, you know, cursing, they were, you know, doing a lot of things that would eventually, you know, lead them to their, you know, demise and stuff like that, and so the other way, on the other side, he's seen them also, you know, in suits, he's seen them, you know, having education, he's seen them, you know, in their right mind and everything, and hence the name crossover. A lot of the times, we think of, you know, crossover just as, you know, a basketball move, but it's really a double entendre with the basketball move and also youth making changes from death to life. They're making a crossover, and it's youth making changes through DEBSWAI, which is Coach Omar's wife's name, but it's an acronym. DEBSWAI is dedication, education, service, and belief. First time I was introduced to crossover was when I was seven years old. I'm now twenty-two years old. Crossover gave me a lot of opportunities from even when I was out, you know, doing stuff that I had no business doing into now, you know, even serving with them and, you know, coaching and just serving and everything like that. And this main, if I could share, the main scripture that crossover is, is based upon, it says, "This is as truly, truly I say to you: Whoever hears my word and believes him who sent me has eternal life, and he does not come into judgment, but has come over from death to life," and that's John, Chapter five, verse twenty-four. I thank you guys, and I, you know, really appreciate you guys for you guys' air. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Royal Edwards, followed by Ed Kazmeric.
Hi, how you doing, Bobby and council? Please excuse the attire. I actually work for Elk Grove City in the school district, and I'm a part of one of the layers. When I heard this evening that we had a hearing here at city council in regards to campus life and crossover, I had no excuse but to show up. As you said, that Omar is, is, couldn't make it, and I'm here as a representative, as one of the partners, and I have a long life with crossover, going on almost eighteen years. Matter of fact, the young man here was a student of mine then, but personally, professionally, I've worked with, in, and around crossover in diff, in different facets, in terms of the recruitment, in terms of the coaching, in terms of the life skill programs, the tutoring structures that we have, and indirectly but directly, even in the school district, as we have partnership with Elk Grove in the past. The bottom line is, as we always know, it's hard to find the nickels and the pennies to keep things like this going. Let me tell you how impactful it is on a personal level. I have six children myself, four of my boys, and they, and they're very successful. They were a product of crossover as they grew up in the third and fourth and fifth grade to go on to finish high school, to go on and finish college, to finish their master's program, currently right now into medicine, into the apple field, the tech field, into the professional field, and have families. I'm very proud of that. Crossover is a very integral part in, in that phase and in those phases in regards to giving them the foundation and giving them some of the tools. Crossover is not only a faith-based organization, but it's an organization that allow our kids of tomorrow a place to come. I always say the basketball is just a nugget, and once we get them in the, in the program, we offer all different types of programs to help them and their families to, to cope with life in general. We get a lot of turnover in terms of kids coming back to help. Like I said, I've been here eighteen years, and I haven't missed a beat. We did connection in Midtown and even in the north area, but I'm a product, I'm a product of Elk Grove. I live in Elk Grove. I've seen this, I've seen this program work within our school systems, and I believe that's what the grant is for. As I say, I work, and don't let the uniform fool you, it is what it is, and crossover generally is, we, generally is an intervention for our department, and I can say that wholeheartedly. So it'd be money well spent, and I wouldn't hesitate, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up is Ed Kazmeric, followed by Shelley Kessin.
Madam Mayor and Vice Mayor and council members, thank you for having me here, and I'm Ed Kazmeric with Campus Life Connection, and I'm very impressed with the pronunciation of my name. The Ed people usually get just fine. As the Executive Director of Campus Life Connection, I'm so proud to have these gentlemen represent what they do through crossover basketball. We are a first time to, to be, receive, receive funding from Elk Grove, so we're so proud and thankful for that, and at the same time, we are a rather longstanding organization. Over seventy years, we've done work with youth in the greater Sacramento area. So right now, we extend, we have worked with youth from Elk Grove all the way to Grass Valley, and you can imagine the breadth of that. We work in sixty-three different schools, that is with kids who go to sixty-three different schools, and our, our programs are known as Campus Life, which is oftentimes work on-campus or off-campus. You may have heard of Point Break, it's our self-esteem assemblies that we do at schools, and then, of course, also crossover basketball, our West Sacramento Callings Teen Center, Sayonara Center in Citrus Heights, and the Campus Life Barn in Granite Bay. So there are many ways and many opportunities we provide for youth. One of the just most outstanding that we have is crossover basketball. I'm thrilled for Elk Grove to be able to expand, help us expand this effort to reach kids, give them an opportunity to be mentored and coached, and to make more positive and greater decisions in their lives, and it'll change not only their life, but their family's lives to come. So very thankful, very proud, and very appreciative. Have a good evening.
All right, thank you. Next up is Shelley Kessin, followed by Tissa Johnson.
Hi, I'm Shelley Kessin, and I want to thank the council and mayor for your support of the arts in our community, and specifically the nonprofit Youth Theater Program, Musical Mayhem Productions, or MMP. Your past grant funding contributions are deeply appreciated, and we so appreciate being included in this year's recommendations as well, although we are currently recommended at a reduced funding level. And I'm here tonight to encourage you to fund us at or above previous levels. As an MMP mom for the past six years, I can speak from experience about what an incredible program this is for our community, and while I could mention a million reasons why, I'll just stick with my top three. First of all, the MMP team is our excellent financial stewards, and they make the most of every dime that is available to them. They are actively fundraising in our community, relying on volunteers, and the generosity of our community to produce this incredible program. I can assure you that any funding that they receive, you can be confident that it will be put to good use. Next, MMP really makes a difference for kids. It's a safe place that's inclusive of every background and every ability level, where all are welcome to come as they are, and they grow in their skills, their confidence, and their authentic selves. As, as we all know, our kids are up against a lot today, and truly safe places are, are hard to come by, but thanks to Anne Marie and Bryce, who oversee the MMP program, it's a place where all belong and where everyone who walks through those doors are warmly welcomed as part of the MMP family. And finally, I will say that you can't turn on the news or scroll through your feed without seeing something sad, or violent, or heartbreaking, or unjust, and, and clearly that penetrates all of us, our, our hearts and our minds, and we need the arts to give us a break from this sadness and from this madness, and I think it's, we need that more at the younger ages than ever before. And for these reasons, excellent financial stewardship, a safe place of positive, positivity and belonging, and a program that inspires the love of arts and the beauty and the respite that it provides, I urge you to support grant funding at or above previous levels. I'll just close by saying MMP is a bright light in our community, and I, I ask you to please do all you can to help ensure that this show truly does go on. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Diane Lampy, followed by Lisa Stanley. Did we lose the other speaker?
Good evening, Mayor Singh Allen, Vice Mayor Spies, and council members. Glad to be back again this week. So I am Diane Lampy, I'm president of Elk Grove Heart, and given the tough decisions that it seems you may be having this year with the grant funding, just wanted to give a little more information about our organization tonight. So Elk Grove Heart is all volunteer, and all nine of our board members are dedicated and work diligently for the integrity of our organization. Our Transitional Houses are the core of our mission, to assist those experiencing homelessness in Elk Grove towards self-sufficiency and greater independence. To name many, we collaborate closely with Sacramento Self-Help Housing, Elk Grove City Housing Manager, Elk Grove's Homeless Navigator, the Landlord Incentive Program, the Elk Grove Police Department, the Elk Grove Food Bank Services, Uplift People of Elk Grove, our city's churches, Elk Grove Overnight Warming Locations, the new Core Wellness Center that's coming to Elk Grove, yay, and look forward to collaborating with other new efforts that may come as a part of Measure E. At any given time, we are working on at least of a couple, a couple of grant projects also that are from the city of Elk Grove. While each of our board members has many tasks that we work on, the administrative assistant hours that we had last year through the Community Services Grant and are asking for the support of this year helps us keep everything organized and flowing smoothly. We pride ourselves on quick responses to incoming calls for help, I answer those many daily, organize grant activities, expenditures, and on-time grant reports. We pride, are proud of our monthly board meetings with notes and bimonthly solutions meetings for the community partners and community members to attend, which are held in this room right here. There's much more, but those are some of the things that the administrative assistant helps us with. So we are asking for less money than we did last year. We want to be fair, our grant is not very large, and we think we've found the sweet spot for the things that this position most helps us with, so we did choose to cut back what we asked for this year. We'd greatly welcome your consideration and your support of our grant application, and I'm very happy now or at a later time to answer any questions. Last year, we had a grant of twenty-one thousand, two hundred dollars. It seems small, but it's big in our world, and we have reduced our request to fifteen thousand, five hundred, so we are hopeful to continue to get that support, and thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Lisa Stanley, followed by Lana Shereer.
Good evening. My name is Lisa Stanley, and I'm a project, program director with Black Youth Leadership Project. Thank you so much, I want to say thank you first, for our ARPA funds. With those funds, we have been able to expand our support networks. We have started three new support networks since being, since being granted those funds, so thank you. While we're usually advocating for black youth in the school district, we, we know our calling is much bigger, and our issues are even bigger, deeper. Our current project is to intentionally build community for low-income and disenfranchised youth and families in Elk Grove. With the nation's social unrest and economic insecurities, COVID-19 exacerbated the effects of systemic and intergenerational trauma caused by living under oppression. We want to change the trajectory of lives through guided mindfulness practices. BYLP is committed to the cultivation and cultivation of moment-by-moment, nonjudgmental-focused attention and awareness. BYLP's twelve-week mindfulness program plans to run multiple programs simultaneously for different age groups, community members, and our existing support networks. BYLP will serve youth and families struggling with trauma, isolation, and economic insecurities. These high stressors has heightened our community's emotions and contribute to depression, anxiety, substance abuse, and other preventable health and mental illnesses, and also contributing to the homelessness numbers that we were talking about earlier. Barriers which make it hard and sometimes impossible for low-income communities to recover from. BYLP will teach the importance of self-care through trauma-informed techniques such as guided meditation, establishing healthy boundaries, self-awareness, breathing techniques, physical activity, and creative expression. BYLP staff are all mindfulness-based substance abuse treatment certified facilitators, and we will explore what mindfulness, mindful base, mindfulness-based self-care practice can look like for each individual. We want to focus on the whole person. A sustained, sustained mindfulness practice is a foundation that builds personal and community emotional intelligence. We want to be on the preventative scale. Please help us help our community by funding our efforts in healing the mind, body, and spirit. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Lana Shere, I'm just butchering it, I know, Shere.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. My name is Lana Shere, and I am here this year again on behalf of Musical Mayhem Productions. It is my favorite youth group in Elk Grove, you may be aware of that, but I'm, first and foremost, I'm here on behalf of Anne Marie and Bryce, because they could not be here because they are at the theater with, you know, a house full of kids, teaching children to sing and dance and act, and, but they wanted to extend their sincere gratitude for the funding this year and in years past, because it makes a significant difference in their operation. And I also wanted to update you a little bit on what MMP is doing this year, so Anne Marie sent me a nice little list. Two weeks ago, I don't know if you had an opportunity to come out and see Newsies, it was a fantastic program, and we had a sold-out house of seven hundred. Incredible, you know, more people are actually coming out and enjoying the theater, and it's wonderful to see. I don't even have a child in the program anymore. My child aged out, he turned eighteen and he moved away to college, but he flew home to see Newsies, and it was spectacular. They have seven shows right now in rehearsal with over three hundred and eighty-five cast members. They have a hundred and three kids in their Master's Academy program, and a Master's Academy is, there's four different levels, and they compete, so they travel around and they perform and they compete in shows. My son did this, you're going to hear from another mom a little bit later, her son just got back from New York. This year, they went to Atlanta and competed in the Junior Theater Festival there. They also competed in a local Sacramento festival that they had, and they won awards in, in both of those, you know, competitions. They're really bright kids, and through the, you know, training of Anne Marie and Bryce and all of the wonderful teachers, these kids are doing really well, so I hope you will come out and support them in the shows. And some of the students were even selected to go to New York and film content for iTheatrics. iTheatrics is a program that creates and distributes the junior Broadway shows that you see them perform. It's a really big deal. And so, you know, Shelley did a really great job of talking about why MMP is important to our youth and to our community, and on a personal level, I can just say it is wonderful for those children. I am so blessed that my child was able to participate for ten years, and he is who he is today because of Anne Marie and Bryce and Musical Mayhem Productions. So again, thank you, and we appreciate your support.
All right, thank you. Next up is Veronica Piazza, followed by Lorraine Pryor. Is Veronica Piazza? Oh, there you are.
And you said my name perfectly. I am a parent, I'm also a parent, a current parent, with Musical Mayhem Productions, and I also want to thank you for your continued support. I want to piggyback on what Shelley said. Musical Mayhem Productions, it is a very inclusive place, it is a safe place, it's my son's second home, and I can tell you, he's been a part of Musical Mayhem- And I can tell you, he's been a part of Musical Mayhem Productions for about nine years. And he is one of the students we just did fly back yesterday, quite late, so I'm tired from New York. But he has filmed with iTheatrics, who has these festivals they participate in. The one in Sacramento, they won Best in Music, and their singing is just like phenomenal. You can just take these kids and just put them right on Broadway. And I'm not just saying that because I'm biased, but it's true. And he is one of the students who have been selected to go and film. We've been there probably six times since he was 11, filming DVDs that are around the world for Disney musicals and MTI shows and iTheatrics. So we'll be there again in June, filming another DVD and two more workshops to bring these shows to youth. He is currently one of the interns at Musical Mayhem Productions. So he is also giving back, which he loves to do, to children from the ages of four to 10, and he directs shows for them. So they're currently working on Seussical. And I can tell you, as, as a recently retired peace officer, that I know there is a great need to be very proactive, sorry, in our community with our children, so that we can make sure that our future is, is, looks quite different. And I just want to say that Musical Mayhem Productions does that. The things that they do for the children, the way they help them grow, sometimes as young performers in our society are sometimes bullied or made fun of, especially boys in, in this endeavor. And so my son has experienced that. But at MMP, he's safe. He feels safe. He feels happy. I can tell you, he is now 17, and the only, the only, just a constant male figure that he's had in his life is Bryce at MMP. And so much so that as he's directing the children, you can hear Bryce in what he says. So it's not just an environment that teaches children about being responsible, fulfilling their dreams, going after their dreams, and learning in, in performing arts. It's also just teaching them how to be great people, and kind of giving them the ability to, and the desire and the motivation to go on in their lives. So he, as well as Lana's son, will be going into college. And we have done several auditions in New York for a couple of shows coming out on Broadway, The Wiz and MJ the Musical that's there. That's what we were just doing in New York. I'm sorry. I just want to thank you all for your continued support, and we are so appreciative.
Thank you, Veronica. Next up is Lorraine Pryor, followed by Christine Cuddy.
Well, good af, I'm sorry, good evening. Oh, my God. Y'all, I did principal for a day today out in San Juan, and I'm beat. I admire our principals. First, I'd like to say thank you for even your consideration in considering BYLP as a partner of Elk Grove. A lot of times when I'm before boards like this, I'm a little upset, but I'm not upset today. I'm in a really great mood. And so it is our pleasure to continue to try to fill the gaps that we see existing. We do know that Sac County has an epidemic on its hands with the opioid explosion in use amongst our young people and the deaths that we are seeing around our community. And our job as community members is to try to figure out where can we fit in? Where can we make a place? And so I'm so excited to tell you that we did pay for all of our, all of our staff to be trained as youth peer mentor program specialists. We have also made sure that our younger folks, so we have kids in our office that went through Black Youth Leadership Project, that are now giving back as mentor advocates or, I'm sorry, peer advocates, and they have also been trained to facilitate groups. And two of our 21-year-olds are actually running a group right now. And so how, what does that look like? So mindfulness-based substance use treatment for adolescents is a group model where they come and they sit in a circle, and they start off with meditation. Why? We need them to get grounded, and we need them to shake off whatever may have happened, so that they can hear what the information that is going to be given to them. Then they go through a whole lesson. It's a curriculum that is, I think it's Himmelstein. What is it? What's the name, Lisa?
Samson.
Yep, Himmelstein. I got it right. All right, look, I'm batting 100. And we are one of the only teams in Northern California that has trained all of its staff, and we have another training coming up at the end of April to reinforce some of the new kids that we have on our staff and make sure that they also get trained as facilitators. Then we're going to put them through Level 2, which is the certification through the state of California for specialists. And some of us are going to Level 3 as Substance Use Disorder counselors. So your investment is going to make a huge impact on what it is we are able to do to continue to insulate our community in the way that we have been doing, and we, we are committed to doing moving forward. So thank you for your time and allowing me to speak.
Good to see you, Ms. Pryor. Next up is Christine Cuddy.
Hi there. I'm Christine. I'm the executive director of the Senior Center. Wasn't planning on talking, so I'm going to wing it. Thank you so much for your support of the Senior Center and the continued support that you give us. We are facing some unprecedented growth. We have over 1,800 members, and they're coming in by the hundreds, it seems. They're all looking for a place for friendship, for compassion, for things to do, and to stay healthy. My goal is to keep them healthy, keep them part of the community, keep them vibrant, so that they're, they continue to, they do a lot of volunteering, they do a lot of shopping, they do a lot of, you know, I want them to be a part of the community. Keeping them healthy, keeping them vibrant is a huge part of that. We're very proud of the programs that we have. A lot of, a lot of exercise, a lot of games, a lot of art projects and such, and, and they're finding us. They are coming in, we're, a year ago, we were probably seeing about 120 people a day. Now we're seeing over 220 people a day. So it's, it's exciting, and the center is beautiful. And, and so I just want to thank you for your support and ask you to continue and, and anyway, thank you very much. Have a great evening.
Thank you very much. I think that is our last speaker. So I will go ahead and close the public comment opportunity and declare the public hearing is closed.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
It would be appropriate for me to leave at this time for consideration of one of the grants. So let me, give me a second.
Running for red. So members who have been on the council before, the way we do this, sometimes council members have a conflict because they have, they're on the board or a close family member is. So we have that person step out. The rest of the members consider the grant, and then the person comes back.
The rest of them. Yep. All right.
So this one would be for?
For running for red.
Running for red.
Any questions on the allocation? Can we get a motion?
Yeah, I'll move to adopt this recommendation.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Can we bring her back in?
Yeah, bring her back in.
You want to get him?
Yeah.
Were you listening? All right, so we have the rest of the considerations before us. I have a question. What, I don't have the chart in front of me. What was the allocation in the past for Musical Mayhem?
Last year, they were allocated $17,840.
And this year, we're giving 15?
$11,913.
$11,000, okay. I, I would like to see it funded as it was in years past. I just know that, you know, the work that Musical Mayhem and Visual and Performing Arts does for our students is immeasurable.
Just as a reminder, the council, you can make any adjustments that you want. When you increase, when you have to decrease.
Yeah, exactly.
I know. So I'm aware. So, so let's look at those. Are we giving more to one group that did not ask for a certain threshold? I don't have that number. Can we pull up the chart here?
Mayor, while we're doing that, could I, I just want to quickly acknowledge, just want to thank all of you who came out to speak tonight, and all the work that you do for, for the community. We talk about the, there's the saying of it takes a village, and we usually, usually in the, in the context of our kids. But when I heard all of you speak tonight, and, and I think it speaks for everybody who applied on here, and the work that they're all doing on this list. But you heard people supporting the arts, our pets, our youth, the homelessness, helping people from, or getting out of poverty, our seniors. It just warms my heart, because without, without all of you doing the work that you do, our city would be much worse off. And so thank you for helping us be a much better community. Your involvement, your engagement, the work you do is so meaningful. And I really wish we, we had more funds that we could give. There's a lot of great work here, and we're talking about, you know, some of you who weren't fully allocated. But, you know, please know, we, you know, we, we really value the work that you do. So.
Alicia, could you put the slide back up again, so that?
Yeah, it's a little hard to view it because it's pretty small. Even though we increase it, then you can't see the full.
Do you have that spreadsheet itself, or?
I do not.
Okay.
Also, I will say the CBDG portion of the grant, I, I encourage you all to look to, to leverage that, those funds in the future, since it seems like there, there could be missed opportunities there.
So Musical Mayhem is eligible for CSG funding. And to allocate them at prior year, it would be almost $6,000, looking to remove from other grantees. And I will say, the majority of those that have requested, or that are receiving funding are receiving at a lower rate than what they requested. And for some of them, if the adjustments were made, like say they wanted to provide four programs, and we adjusted the programming so that they could provide two programs. So we would have to limit those numbers with them to be able to determine if someone was reduced to a certain amount, if they could still provide programming.
Yeah, that makes it challenging here to, I don't want to.
There's a second CSG slide, though, so.
Take from one at the expense of another.
You know, I, I think that, at least for myself, what I would, I don't want to say not be, I'd be less inclined to take from those that were serving homelessness, food, you know, that sort of thing.
Frontline.
So that makes the list even shorter, and I hate to
Yep.
kind of compete it that way, but we have people who are homeless and hungry, and.
And that is a priority of that front.
Yeah, I mean, I personally, because I know staff put in a lot of hard work on this, I, I'm, I'm not, for me, I'm not willing to change.
Yeah, I don't, I don't want to take away from some of these other, obviously, more pressing.
Exactly.
Because we're dealing with hunger and homelessness. What I can offer from myself is to personally contribute from my discretionary fund.
So.
So I'll make a pledge there. I don't know the full amount yet, but I will do some there to augment it.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I, along those lines, I mean, because of what we're talking about right now, if the council's inclined, I'd, I'd like to propose that we, we bring back, have staff look at increasing a little bit our discretionary funds. For the last 20 years, we've been at the same amount, and we're a much bigger population now in what you're suggesting. Yeah, thank you.
I agree. I agree, because it's not, it's, we use it to support many causes and, you know, I, I would like to look at that.
Yeah.
Would there be, do we have at least three?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Great, yeah.
Okay.
That would be considered as part of the budget process?
Okay.
So we can, if there's any direction on amount that you would like us to consider to include in that, there wouldn't be any final action tonight, but do you have any inclination?
I don't know, maybe 50% or 15 or 20, or something like that? It was at 10?
It was set 20 years ago.
I, I believe. I don't know how.
The history of the 10,000. I don't know the history of that offhand.
I don't know.
So I would like more information. I mean, if we can do it based on population growth and, you know, make it commensurate.
We can put it as an action item.
But 15, 20 would be not unreasonable.
We can put it as an action item for, when you consider the budget, and you can make the decision and discuss it at that time.
Okay. Very good.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to give myself, but I've committed all mine to other nonprofits too, so, thank you.
Thank you for bringing that up, Councilmember Stone. Other comments, questions? Yes, sir. Councilmember Brewer.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to thank you for the report. This was good. And I like how, how we're injecting new programs into the fold. And we have a lot of programs that serve the city of Elk Grove in a lot of different capacities, and it's really good to see that we're, that we're doing a blend of, of, of programs to match the resources that are going out, especially with the ARPA funds that are available. And just, and seeing how it's, how they're being applied. Some programs are being very specific on how, on how they're, they're using the funds, so I really like that. And I noticed that there were some programs that traditionally would have applied, and they didn't. And so we encourage them to come back and apply as well, because there's so many people providing such good service here in Elk Grove that we all, that we want to be a part of what, what they're doing. So much so that where you have people who live here in Elk Grove that serve on regional public service type of nonprofits that have a direct benefit for Elk Grove, we definitely want to see them be a part of the process as well, because I know as big day of giving is, is right around the corner, we all have our own discretionary funds to contribute. And then we have our own personal funds that will contribute to go, to go above and beyond. So it's always good to just, just to see those, those organizations that are out there, those nonprofits that are really doing their part to help Elk Grove and, and make Elk Grove that really, that, that, that great town that people look so highly upon, because it's, it's very important. It's very important that, that we, that we are, our colleges in on that. And it's like one of the programs that I'm, that I was very pleased and seeing applying, truthfully, is Black Youth Leadership Project. Because I've known Lorraine Pryor for many years, and she's done a lot of good work for, for youth here in Elk Grove and throughout the Sacramento region. So to see them receive funds in their first outing, and to hear the specificity that, that the funds would be used for that came from Lorraine and, and from Lisa Stanley was, was, was very impressive. And so anytime we could, like I said, Black Youth Leadership Project, Chicks in Crisis, Food Bank, Elk Grove Heart, Musical Mayhem, anything, that's, that shows you the broad array of services that, that we're doing for our youth. And so anytime we could provide block grant funds for those organizations is, is, is great for the order. Thank you very much.
Yeah, I mean, we just have wonderful nonprofits that do tremendous work, and I wish we had an unlimited pot of money to give the maximum requests. Any other comments?
Yeah, I wanted to say thank you for the presentation, and thank you to all the speakers. This is really, this is really about community, right? Ultimately, it's about investing in Elk Grove, and it's about helping those in Elk Grove. I'm super excited just to see that we're doing amazing work, and these are untold and unseen stories, right? We don't do the day-to-day as nonprofits have been doing. I was super excited just to hear about crossover basketball, because I've seen the lives that it's impacted in South Sacramento. And I'm super excited to hear about Black Youth Leadership Project, because it talks about self-awareness. And I think many people don't talk about self-awareness nowadays. You learn from it through TikTok instead of actually going through the process of dealing with stuff, so. And, you know, fine arts, that's something that's needed, especially in the time now where folks would rather be inside than be out or doing stuff. So thank you for everyone, and, you know, even uplifting our families who are less fortunate, you know? So I'm really excited for this, and appreciated for everyone who came out, and thank you for this presentation.
Our vice mayor?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This, this, I think this is the third year, I think, that we've participated in this one, you and I. This is one of those items that I really like, and I also really.
This is one of those items that I really like and I also really dislike. Truly, because I like to hear about all of the good things that are happening in the city from volunteers, right? Just doing service. And there, there are just so many fantastic causes out there. I've had the fortunate opportunity to, to meet most of you in, in, in service or in the neighborhood or, you know, and it, these are, these are all issues that I, or most issues, I should say, that I can identify with. Or many of them that I've participated with. And so the part that I dislike about this is that you have to decide, you know, who gets what. And it's, it's really difficult to do that. But as, as I, as I did mention, I think at least for my, my priorities in general, go towards the, the homeless, the food insecure, those types of issues. And so I think staff has done a really good job here and I appreciate this. I know it's probably not easy for you either. And I, I just want to thank everybody who came out tonight. I appreciate you coming and representing your, your causes and thank you much, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. And I appreciate all of the, the staff time on this because you use that equity lens, which is so important. It can't be equal dollars to everybody. It's based on the need and the need is great. The need is very diverse. So thank you for putting this together. You know, I'm happy that I'll be able to help at least somewhat on my, with my discretionary funds. And in the future, maybe there's more opportunities there, but thank you for the presentation. I think that, I don't know that this is not an action item per se, this is just providing direction. So we are, if I don't hear any objections, we're supportive of what you've brought forward. And without any objections, I think we're good. All right. Thank you for that excellent report and thank you all that are here with us in the audience still. Thank you for coming and speaking and sharing your passion for your nonprofits. All right, with that, we will move on to our next item, item 8.3.
It's a public hearing to consider the 89th annexation to Community Facilities District Number 2006-1 Maintenance Services.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Vice Mayor and Counsel. I am clearly not Renee Attar. She is, she sends her regrets. She wasn't feeling well this evening, so I'll be making the presentation on her behalf. So as you well know.
Mr. Paul, you might have to use the keyboards. Just pull out the tray on the speaker podium and then there should be the arrow keys to the right. I think it's just not synced up.
Yep. As you well know, the city maintains several special taxing districts. Annexation to those districts are typically part of the project approval process. The requirements are specific to each project and vary accord, vary according to where they are located in the city and what the uses are. And the rates contained in those special taxing districts are typically adjusted annually for inflation. We've got two projects in front of you tonight, Suzadary Units 5, 6, and 7, and Poppy Key Southwest, Southwest, both annexing into the citywide maintenance district. This will be the 89th annexation into that district with funds maintenance services throughout the city and the assessments will be levied in perpetuity. So one of the projects, Suzadary, is about 380 single-family units located northeast of Bilby Road and Big Horn Boulevard, as you can see on the map. And the second project, as I mentioned, Poppy Key Southwest, is, consists of 324 single-family units located southeast of Poppy Ridge Road and Big Horn Boulevard. Both of these projects annexed into Police Services CFD and the Street Maintenance CFDs last month on February the 8th. That concludes my presentation. If you have any questions, I'm more than happy to answer them. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for your presentation. I'll declare that the public hearing is now open and open up the public comment opportunity. I do not see anyone signed up to speak, so I'll close the public comment opportunity and declare the public hearing is not closed. And look for motion one.
Motion one to adopt the resolution.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And may I request the results of the ballot tabulation?
Indeed, of 704 possible votes, 704 affirmative votes were cast, authorizing the city of Elk Grove to levy a special tax at the rate apportioned and described. Measure passes with more than two-thirds of all votes cast in the election in favor of the measure. Resolution declaring the results of the election is available for council consideration.
All right, motion two.
Motion two to adopt the resolution.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion three, introduce and waive the forereading by substitution of title only and ordinance levying and apportioning the special tax and territory annexed to Community Facilities District Number 2006-1 Maintenance Services, Annexation Number 89, and amending Elk Grove Municipal Code Section 3.19.010.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next item, item 9.1.
Has to receive an update on the city's diversity, equity, and inclusion efforts for calendar year 2022.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. My name is Cara Reddick, Deputy City Manager. And I'm here tonight to talk about the city's diversity, equity, and inclusion efforts for calendar year 2022. So before I get started, I just want to talk about DEI is a top organizational priority. This report encompasses work effort from many in the organization. And I want to give a shout out to the city's DEI staff team that have, have put a lot of hard work into this, as well as the Resident Diversity and Inclusion Commission. So as you all know, we put out many social media campaigns to be a city welcome to all. So there are, we put out 43 DEI posts this last year and we did 23 tributes to historic or iconic figures on our social media. We raised the pride flag in June. This was a very proud moment at City Hall for our city staff, the Diversity and Inclusion Commission, as well as our residents. The City Council put forth 14 council proclamations in the following areas. We do training with Circle of Education and Oakland-based business. 167 staff were trained in cross-cultural relationship building strategies and getting to know other staff. One of our staff values is belonging and we had a lot of new staff, so we wanted to do some exercises where they could get to know each other. And then 130 sworn staff did some post-required strategic communications training that included procedural justice and diversity training as components. So about 63% of our organization was trained on a DEI topic in 2022. Some of our human relations effort that is, that is important for bringing staff into our organization is we're still working to advertise in a variety of diverse locations. We continue to blind screen applicants. So when a, a name comes forth to Human Resources, the technician reading the application does not see a name. Then it goes into the next level of the organization as a subject matter expert. They do not see the name of the person. The name is only revealed in the interview. So the blind screening is meant to ensure no bias is occurring in the process. So we prioritize diversity on our panel selection process. We do bias training for those panel members on the day of the interview and we have specific DEI questions during the interview. So we'll talk a little bit about the statistics of who we're bringing into the organization and what our, what our numbers look like. So in 2022, of our new hires, 55% were white. This was slightly higher than our number in 2021. That was 49% were white. Our new hires by gender, 54% were female in 2022. Our turnover ratio, so this is the act of replacing one employee with another, that went up slightly in 2022 to 4%, but it's still within a good range. So this chart is about our employee diversity ratio by gender. You can see in 2021 and 2022, the numbers are the same in our organization. So this chart is our employee diversity ratio by race and ethnicity and it's kind of a five-year look at this. We're trying to look at this for if different trends. So if you look at the bottom in the green bar, you can see the difference. We've had an increase in Asian employees at 3% as well as employees that identify as two or more races. We've had a decrease in our black employees as well as our white employees by 4%. And this, I think, is the most telling chart. It's a five-year snapshot of our employee diversity ratio. So this is other than Caucasian staff. So you can see in 2018, 35% of our organization was non-white. And in 2022, 39% of our organization is non-white. So it's very hard to move this number up because of the turnover ratio. So every time somebody leaves, it depends on who is leaving, right? And then who you're bringing into the organization. But I think we want to look at this chart to see if we're headed in the right direction and if we are progressing up, so that's positive. On this slide, I'm not going to go over anything, but obviously we have our two-city, our Disciplined Advisory Committee and our DNI Commission. We have the Chief's Advisory Board, made up of residents that advise him on police matters. Our Police Department does a lot of outreach, which you learned about at the, at the annual report that the chief gave two meetings ago. We have our Free Little Library at District 56 where we hand out diverse books. Our Economic Development Department, they participate in the Chambers Economic Equity Task Force. And we sponsor Fourth Wave, an accelerator for a women-led technology business. We're members of the Government Alliance on Race and Equity. We're members of the Women Transportation Seminar. And our CIO is a member of MISAIDIA Committee, which is a DEI committee. So in 2023, we want to continue to improve and enhance on our recruitment strategies. We're going to be making a city communication toolkit, which is going to assist departments that are going to go do outreach with residents on what they should consider, right? Should they go to the residents? Should they translate materials? Who are they, who are they meeting with? We want to partner with nonprofit organizations to create a communication and partnership network. We want to start to meet people where they are to get that, to get a little bit better feedback. And we want to continue to explore ways to recognize and appreciate the city's staff. And we're going to do that with our newly formed Recognition and Appreciation Staff Committee. So that's the conclusion of my presentation. I'm here if you have any questions.
All right. Thank you for that presentation. At this time, I'll open up the public comment opportunity. I don't see anybody signed up, so I'll close the public, public comment opportunity. And look for council comments. I'll start to the left. Councilmember Stone?
Sure, thanks, Mayor. Cara, thank you for the presentation and your leadership involvement, as well as the rest of the team here. I'm looking at the list of the, all the city staff. We really appreciate everybody's engagement and willingness to be a part of this effort. And look forward to, you know, continuing to support you in that role and how we can participate with the events that some of these things you had pictured here. But whatever, whether it's March, Martin Luther King, on March 365, or the other events, we look forward to supporting you all in this effort.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor.
So Cara, if you could go back real quick, I think to the last slide or maybe the two previous slides where we were talking about, ooh.
Go back?
There we go. Maybe one more back.
Is this back for you or?
I think, well, okay, nonprofit organizations create communication and partnership network, meeting people where they are. So which, what type of organizations were you thinking of, like Black Chamber of Commerce or what type of, what are you thinking in that?
Yeah, well, at this point, we don't have organizations narrowed down. We've kind of been brainstorming, but I'll, I'll just give an example of like the Chinese Baptist Church, right? Would that be a group that we would want to partner with? If we're, we want to push out city information or have a city meeting, we ask them to possibly translate documents, we'll give them a stipend and help get our information to their members. And so we want to identify, you know, two to three nonprofit groups to do this with. And then possibly expand, kind of like a little pilot. But we don't have those groups yet. That's just my example for you.
No, I, I think, I think that's great to be able to know, I mean, when you say, talk about meeting people where they are, I think those, I think the churches are helpful. Some of the chamber events or, or chamber organizations are helpful. And then, you know, I, I wanted to just thank you, you know, a number of years back, we, we had some growth to do, right? We had some growing and some, some fixing to do. And we've moved in, in a positive direction. It's a, it's a journey, not a destination, right? And so I just want to thank you for, for leading us on that journey. And, and I know the city is doing the right things to get us in the right direction, so thank you, or to continue in the right direction, I should say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Brewer?
I like the report. And I like the, the, the reality that is, that is pressed into this because we're looking at how we make the city more accessible and inclusive to all. But one of the things that I saw in here that was very interesting, when we look at Table B, Employee Diversity Ratio, Ratio by Race and Ethnicity, and I saw a couple of aisles that had zeros and a couple of minuses. But I think that's part of the attrition that we experienced during COVID, frankly. But as we start to identify and look for new ways to bring people into the city, especially I've seen with the new hires, we saw over at Police, over in Public Works, very encouraging because it shows that we are ramping back up again. And so it's, it's definitely a part of that process of, of getting out, getting the word out to the right quarters. And if you're looking for a, a, a member from, from the Sacramento Black Chamber of Commerce, I'm a member. We could definitely talk and figure out ways to, to, to envelop the, the conversation of the city into the work that, that, that is being done there on that, on that wavelength. And, and they, and they have a, a process where they're actually looking for ways to help, not only from a municipal standpoint, but also from a corporate standpoint. And so there's, there's, there's a lot of good stuff happening there. But it's part, it's part of, it's part of this, part of the process. We're still, we're still working, we're still building, we're still growing as a city. And I think the, the, the numbers that we put up are, are, are good. They could be, obviously, for, for my own selfish purposes, some numbers can be higher. But that's part of the process. And I know one of the things that, that I was talking to the city manager about the other day, I was talking to Jason about how our practices in terms of procurement, who we do business with and how we do business with them and stuff like that. And I think that's going, that, that's, that's a little more down the road. Because right now it's like, we're trying to still get our bearings on what it means for diversity, equity, inclusion, how that fits into the ties of leadership. And, and, and so it's, this is, this is, this is encouraging for, for my first year being here and seeing the, and seeing the report, reading the report, digesting it. This is, this is, this is good. And I, I do like that and, and always willing to help and, and lead. Give you where to go, who to talk to and stuff like that. Because I think as, as we continue the road to great, it does not, it's not bad to be good.
Right.
And this, and this, this is really good, really commendable. So thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Rubles?
Thank you, Mayor. Cara, thank you so much for the presentation. I get excited when I hear that, you know, that we're moving towards the right direction. I'm excited to hear that we're doing, and I don't want to miscorrect, a blind screening, is that correct, the term? Because you've just, you're looking at someone for the qualifications and if they meet them right, not based on, on name or anything. So thank you for that. And I'm excited for, thank you to the staff who's been participating in this. It's, it just, it's a culture that we're building right and we're buying into this. And it's reflective, one, of, of our organization and then the city as well. We saw with the new hires for PD, I'm, I'm excited just to see that there's different people that also look like me right there, right? So I'm pretty excited about it. Please, you know, always know that we're here to help in any, any possible way that we possibly can. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you to my colleagues for your excellent comments. Excellent report, thank you. I really liked seeing the training for additional work on DEI topics, 63.8%. That's a remarkable number. And, you know, as a lifelong learner, I like that there's an investment in that. It's, it's good for professional development and just to truly appreciate and celebrate the great diversity of our community in all its forms. So I, that's intentional work that's taking place, so thank you for that. You know, creating that sense of belonging is important, not only as a city, but within the culture of the city, within here, as a, as a workplace. And so it's important to make sure that we're in alignment with what we're putting out, of what we want for our community, that we're actually modeling that behavior here. So it's great to see that alignment and I really love all the campaigns. And I really love all the campaigns that come out of there, so great work. Thank you again for the report.
Thank you.
All right. We will move on to our next item.
That'll be item nine point two, which is to receive information on the Climate Action Plan update for 2024 and provide direction as needed.
So, good evening, Mayor, Council. Carrie Whitlock, Strategic Planning and Innovation Program Manager. So I am here this evening to provide information and receive any council direction on the update to our climate action plan. So our current climate action plan was adopted in February 2019. It has been amended twice, most recently in December 2022. With the adoption of the cap, the city committed to updating every five years to ensure that new programs, technologies, emission reduction strategies can be leveraged to meet our greenhouse gas reduction goals. So we are now kicking off the process for the update, and we expect to be completed with that in the summer of 2024. So since our 2019 cap was adopted, there's been significant movement, both at the federal and the state level, to address climate change. Most importantly, in 2022, the state passed AB 1279, the Climate Crisis Act. This act requires the state to achieve net zero greenhouse gas emissions by 2045. Also, last year, the California Air Resources Board updated the scoping plan, which now aligns with this, with the accelerated targets that were set in AB 1279. So this includes GHD emission reduction targets that are more aggressive than what was in the 2017 scoping plan, including reducing greenhouse gas emissions to forty-eight percent below 1990 levels by 2030. The previous target was to be forty percent below 1990 levels by 2030. And then also reducing GHD emissions to eighty-five percent below 1990 levels by 2045, which not only is an increase in terms of the reductions, because it was previously an eighty percent reduction, but also an acceleration in the timeframe, because it was 2050 before, and now it's five years sooner. So we need to do more on a quicker timeframe. So with our 2019 cap, the included measures were sufficient to achieve the previous 2030 target of forty percent below the 1990 levels, but would have required additional reduction member, measures to achieve the previous 2015 targets. We now need to achieve, have additional measures to achieve the new 2030 and the new 2045 targets. So we're going to need to be a little bit more ambitious with, with our measures for both of those new targets. So in terms of the cap update process that we're starting, we are starting with a greenhouse gas emissions inventory for both community-wide and local government operations. This will provide us up-to-date data on emissions and provide information on reduction strategies that, reductions that have taken place as a result of past and current measures and efforts that we're doing. We also are looking to form a technology, a technical advisory group to represent, you know, local and regional climate-related organizations and stakeholders. And this group would be intended to help support the review of current measures and the identification of additional measures to help further the reductions and meet those ambitious targets. We're also planning a broad community engagement effort. The cap really is about getting behavior change in the community. That's what's going to make it most successful. So really trying to involve the residents quite a lot in the update. This includes looking at a climate ambassador program, which will train residents on climate action planning and then compensate them for engaging with their networks to better, to gather broader input. We're also looking at in-person and virtual workshop activities, existing events, online surveys, web-based data sharing, input gathering, all of those different types of engagement activities. These are all intended to help us raise awareness about what individuals and household efforts can be done to reduce emissions, to gather broad public input, and then also to gauge support on different reduction measures. And so with that, very brief presentation, I am available for any questions or to hear any council direction on this effort.
All right. Thank you for that presentation. I'll open up the public comment opportunity. I don't see anybody sign up, so I'll close the public comment opportunity. And turn to my council for any questions. I'll start to the right this time.
Thank you, Carrie, for the presentation. No questions.
No questions, and I'll wait for Councilmember Brewer to return. Councilmember Sun?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you also, Carrie, for the presentation. Quick question on the technical advisory group. Do you, I understand you wouldn't have any list of names, but perhaps sectors, I'm assuming business, nonprofit, community, any others, maybe?
I mean, we would also be looking at, you know, for example, the Air District, if we could find somebody at CARB to be part of it, you know, those sorts of organizations as well. But also looking to our local sort of climate-related nonprofit organizations and that.
Okay. And then I would also, I guess, my thought would be to identify the, the biggest wins, so to speak, that we can gain as fast as possible for, for the community in educating everybody on what those are.
Yeah.
Every part of it.
We're looking at various different education tools that are more visual in, in terms of being able to represent greenhouse gas emissions. It can be a little bit of a difficult area to understand, and so how can we better visualize for our residents so that they can understand the trade-offs?
Yeah. Okay. Great. And then the final thing would be, we know that electrical vehicles help, also the telecommuting with virtual meetings. I think if we can get that out to, for, for businesses and employers to use as tools to help in this effort, I think that would be great as well.
Yeah, we're, we're trying to do a lot around the electric vehicle readiness, right? And being able to meet the state's ambitious 2035 goals with the elimination of the sale of ICE vehicles. We really need to be ready for that. So yes, that is a key area.
Okay. Great. That's great to hear. And then, sorry, one last thing that, we talked briefly last time about the restaurants. And I think I gave you a few names.
Yep.
Kevin Phat from Fat, California Fat Restaurant Chain, and others are working on this, too. And, you know, if we could get the restaurants engaged, because I, I think they, you know, they definitely need to be at the table because they'll be hurt from.
Yeah, absolutely. And we have already reached out to the California Restaurant Association and discussed with them about the building electrification issues, but also reaching out to some of our local individual restaurants to hear from them as well.
Awesome. Thank you. Thanks, Mayor.
And just, thanks for bringing up local restaurants. I know that Marie would probably be over the moon about.
Oh, yeah.
Total and Poco.
Yeah, definitely.
And I'm sure she'd be over the moon about, about helping in that. So I did want to thank you for the presentation. I appreciate it, and I didn't have any questions. Thank you.
Councilmember Brewer, do you have any questions for Ms. Whitlock?
No, I wanted to thank Carrie for the report. I had a chance to review it over the weekend, and, and knowing what we're doing on the Climate Action Report, we're still, this is another one. It's the first time absorbing it, but over at CSD, we had a climate action report, and we looked at the intensity of greenhouse gas emissions and what we were doing to reduce that impact and everything we do in our everyday activities. The city report is no different from my perspective, and I definitely see that we are moving in the right direction in that respect. So thank you very much for providing this report.
Thank you as well. I had similar questions on the technical advisory group, so thank you for asking those. These might, this might be a good topic for when we meet with our other government agencies to see alignment work. So with CSD, I know you've done work there, but just, you know, so how we can coordinate efforts, and then with the school district as well. So that would be the only additional ask I would have, is to work towards alignment with the government agencies. I think that would be super helpful.
Yeah.
But thank you for that great presentation and update. With that, we'll move on to our next item.
That'll take us on to item nine point three, which is to consider actions related to city committees, which includes a resolution to potentially revise the Measure E Citizens' Oversight Committee to increase the number of members from five to seven. If that happens, there'd be an opportunity to confirm appointment of two voting members to Measure E Citizens' Oversight Committee. And then some new old business, which is consider appointment of one voting member to the Disability Advisory Committee. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and councilmembers, I'm Jason Lindgren, your city clerk. These are a series of actions that were put into place from the March eighth meeting regarding the Measure E Citizens' Oversight Committee. It was the request by the mayor to increase the seats up to two. In order to do that, we'd have to have a formalized action with a motion and a second for the resolution. Basically, it would rescind the old, the former resolution, but it would revise it to reflect those seven seats. The mayor had given indication of two individuals that you sought to appoint. If that action were to come to fruition, those could be confirmed tonight. And then we've had an opening for the Disability Advisory Committee, and we did receive an application. One of the tricks of the Disability Advisory Committee for filling the seat is it required an individual with a disability. So we got an application that was an individual with a disability, and so that's up for consideration as well tonight.
All right. Thank you for that. At this time, we'll go ahead and open up the public comment opportunity, and we do have one speaker lined up, Valerie Erwin.
Madam Mayor, esteemed councilmembers, my name is Valerie Erwin, and I just wanted to take the opportunity to thank you for considering me as a possible appointee to the Measure E Citizens' Oversight Committee. I absolutely love serving my city. My husband and I moved here twenty, almost twenty years ago and have been active in community and public service prior to my move, but certainly since our move here. I was employed as the Assistant Chief, no, 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 as the Assistant to the Fire Chief for the Casumna's Fire Department. One of my main responsibilities was to develop and oversee our annual budget, which was large. And working with four different fire chiefs, it meant that there were four different ways to do that. Prior to my move to Elk Grove, I was a school office manager and school secretary and heavily responsible for the different budgets, restricted fundings. So I feel very confident that my skills and experience would make me a qualified contributor to this committee. I retired from the Fire Department in the end of 2018 and jumped on the opportunity to have some free time, began volunteering at the Elk Grove Food Bank. That free time suddenly escaped, and I am now the Community Outreach Manager for, for that organization as well. So all of it together, I feel confident that I can serve in this role. I would be honored to do so, and I just wanted to take the opportunity to thank you because I didn't get to talk to you last time. COVID was not my friend, and I appreciate the folks that did have brought my name up to your, to your attention, and I thank them for their kind words. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I don't see anybody else signed up to speak, so I'll close the public comment opportunity. And the motion is officially to increase the number from a five-member board to a seven-member board. May I get a motion?
So moved.
Second? We have a motion in a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right. And the two names for consideration for the Measure E Oversight Committee are Valerie Erwin and Brett Bartholomew. Any objections to those?
Nope.
And then the next is a voting member for the Disability Advisory Committee, and that is Valerie Nicole Chatri. Would be the recommendation. Any objections?
Nope.
Seeing none? All right. Then we have our appointees. Thank you. Next up is our council comments, reports, and future agenda items. I'll start to the left. Councilmember Sun?
Thank you, Mayor. Nothing, nothing to report. Oh, I'm sorry. When, as we all know, the Laguna Creek Trail was funded, so that was ratified at the last CICOG board meeting, so that was it. Yes. Seven million dollars. All right. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I don't have anything to report this evening. Thank you.
Councilmember Brewer?
So tomorrow is the monthly meeting for the Sacramento Public Library Authority at the County Administrative Office Building at 708 Street from three to five. And also on Saturday, the Elk Grove Serpent's Club is having their martinis and merriment at the SES Hall on East Stockton Boulevard from six to nine o'clock.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Robles?
Thank you, Mayor. Nothing to report today.
All right. I had an STA meeting and SACRT, and I think that was it. I have a number of meetings tomorrow. Before we adjourn, I would like to adjourn in the memory of Pastor Curtis J. Mitchell. He was a resident, a longtime resident of Elk Grove. He was the founder of the, or the senior pastor of the Antioch Progressive Baptist Church. His services are this Saturday. He had a tremendous impact, not only in our community, but our region. So we extend our condolences to his family. I actually worked for his son, Don Harris, the founder of the Nehemiah Program, and that's where I got my introduction to community development and housing and community development work. And the Nehemiah Program was actually founded right out of the Antioch Progressive Baptist Church. The original office was out of the church. And so they've done tremendous work in our region, and I would like to adjourn in the memory of Pastor Mitchell. Thank you.